Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen is now called to order. The time is six P. M. At this time, we do request that all electronic devices be turned off or be put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentation's portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's student representative is Jevon Ton. He is an eighth grader at Three Oaks Middle School and has been attending school in Lee County for two years. He is a National Junior Honor Society member, Three Oaks Choir pianist, participates in the Three Oaks Orchestra, has never missed an All-A honor roll since enrolling in Three Oaks. Jevon has also received the ACE Award for Academics, Character, and Excellence from the Rotary of South Fort Myers. In his free time, Jevon enjoys playing basketball, the piano, and talking with friends. He hopes that he has made a contribution to the school board Student Advisory Committee, and he certainly has. Welcome, Jevon. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, three recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under executive services, two items under academic services, six items under business services, one item under human resources, and also three items under operations, as well as eleven superintendent's recommendations, and one item for public hearing, along with four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere and seconded by Mr. Toiber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Toiber will deliver the invocation this evening, after which Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. After the special presentation's portion of the agenda, we will have a brief recess so that if anyone wishes to leave the auditorium, they'll have an opportunity to do so. Please rise for the invocation.
Dear Lord, we come to you today with thanks for our veterans, our servicemen and women that have served to give us the right of this assembly. Thank you for those present at this meeting this evening. I humbly ask that you be with us and guide us as we make many important decisions that will affect all members of our community. Help us remember that everyone's opinions are essential in making the correct decisions. We ask that you guide us in approach all matters that we handle with sincere and just hearts. May you watch over and guide us for the betterment of our community and our country. Keep us always true to our goal of making the best decisions for our children. We ask you in this, in your name, amen.
The cadet presenting the colors tonight will be introduced by First Sergeant Esteban Yaramio of the Mariner High School JROTC Leadership Academy. First Sergeant Yaramio retired after twenty-three years of active service as a combat engineer.
Thank you. Cadet Colonel Marilyn Pozo is the Lee County Deputy Area Commander, Mariner High School Drill Team Commander, and the National Society of Scabbard and Blade President. She is a member of the National Honor Society and the National Society of High School Scholars. She hopes to attend the University of Florida and become a pediatric oncologist specializing in children with cancer, and holds a weighted GPA of four point four five. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Board members and audience, I would like to ask the following people to come forward from Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. Principal Dr. Nathan Shaker, art teacher Ms. Kellen Mills, and Marguerite Maggie Gray and her family.
VSA Florida's annual VSA Florida Student of the Month recognition program strives to increase public awareness of the impact arts make on students with disabilities. Students who participate in the arts develop creativity, have increased self-confidence, understand teamwork, have increased language and math skills, and are generally more engaged. VSA Florida is proud to announce Maggie Gray as one of its April two thousand seventeen Students of the Month. Art teacher Kellen Mills at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School nominated Maggie for this prestigious award. Ms. Mills shares with us that Maggie is a leader in the classroom and school community through her spunky positivity and enthusiastic participation. Maggie's artwork serves as a model for her classmates, and her creativity and passion make her a real trailblazer. Recently, her artwork has been selected for the Lee Art Education Association's annual show at the Lee County Alliance for the Arts, an extremely coveted and respected award for student achievements in the arts. Maggie is a member of SOAR, Standing for Spirit, Optimism, Achievement, and Respect. She makes posters that inspire participation in the community values of this school organization and is on the SOAR squad for pep rallies. Additionally, she is involved with the school TV production crew and stars on the morning news report. Maggie is one of the autism spectrum. The school board and superintendent are very pleased to recognize Maggie Gray as the VSA Florida April two thousand seventeen Student of the Month. Oh, we have one of her art pieces here.
Can we have another presentation for Maggie?
We do. This is actually a trophy from the VSA. It's a beautiful trophy.
I would like to ask the JROTC instructors from Mariner High, First Sergeant Esteban Yaramio? Did I say it right?
Yaramio.
Yaramio, sorry. And Riverdale High First Sergeant Michael Trents, who please join me at the lectern. The school district of Lee County is proud to recognize the JROTC drill teams from Mariner High and Riverdale High Schools. There's a special order for the-- hang on for just a second. They are so-- okay, all right. In position? All right, hold on. The school district of Lee County is proud to recognize the JROTC drill teams from Mariner High and Riverdale High Schools, bringing home first, second, and third place trophies from the Florida Drill Team and meet in Lakeland, Florida on April the first, two thousand seven. Also, on Saturday, May sixteenth, the Mariner High School JROTC Triton Drill Team competed at the All Services National Drill Competition against the best drill teams from around the nation. With the JROTC drill team members from Mariner High School, please come forward. With the JROTC drill team members from Riverdale High School, please come forward. The school board and the superintendent are very pleased to recognize these cadets and their coaches for their achievement in state competitions, and those that competed and placed in national competitions.
Good evening. The Florida Junior Thespians All-State Festival for Drama Students was held February ninth through eleventh, two thousand seventeen, in Orlando. A large delegation of approximately one hundred and seventy-seven middle school thespians from eight Lee County middle schools attended and earned all-state recognition and awards in various areas to include large group musical, small group musical, ensemble acting, duet musical, costume construction, one-act plays, publicity design, and more. As I call out the school, would everyone from that school please come forward to have a group picture taken? Calusa Middle School. Challenger Middle School. They're unable to attend due to a school performance, which is very fitting. Cypress Lake Middle School. Gulf Middle School. Arns Marsh Middle School. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. Okamic Middle School. And last, but certainly not least, Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School.
Ladies and gentlemen, now at this time, we will take a brief recess in case anybody wishes to leave, but you are welcome to stay for the business meeting. Okay, at this time, we will resume the business meeting. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks upon individuals are prohibited. The time loup per speaker is three minutes. Ms. Fisher, I have one card this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who has not completed a card and wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Will you please stand and say your name? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Martin, please call the card.
I should have provided one other piece of instruction. If you wish to address the instructional materials as part of the public hearing this evening, you would not speak at this time, but rather at the public hearing opportunity. The one card is Ms. Jerry Ware.
Mrs. Ware.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As always, I am gracious for the opportunity to come before you, but tonight, I'm exceptionally happy to come. I had an opportunity to share with Dr. Santini and Saretta and the other members of the CAT team as we address the needs and concerns of our have-and-have-nots, that's what I call them, okay? And I was very pleased with the results. We have been toiling at James Stephens, and we've had phenomenal results as far as I'm concerned. In fact, one of the other things that really made me happy last week was some of the kids were even able to go to the repertory downtown to see a live play. And I was very, very happy for that. I went over to greet them, to see them off. But tonight, I come for something, and you know, I've always wanted something, there's always a but. I feel that maybe we might want to consider the children that are being bused from within a two-to-three-mile radius from that school are being bused to Colonial. And the bulk of the children that are coming into James Stephens are children from Lehigh Acres, which does not make it apropos for parents to really participate. So I am hoping that you will consider making some changes in how the population is drawn to James Stephens. I really, really would appreciate it. We've done phenomenal gains there, and I think if we keep working together, it can, we can do better things. So I really think that we need to bus some of those kids, leave them in their community, and allow them to attend James Stephens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ware. Bonnie Margolin.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's been a long time since I've been here, but I was here tonight honoring my daughter, who was one of the thespians that was up here with you from North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. And so I wanted to say, first of all, congratulations. Wow, we have a full cast up here now, don't we? So good luck and congratulations. I know it was hard won, each one of you. I haven't been here, so that's good news. That means you're doing something right. Dr. Atkins, I really do appreciate what you've done moving Dr. Santini up and giving us Dr. Millens. I just wanted to say that here tonight. It is a hard act to follow Dr. Santini, especially at a school of the arts with parents like us, but boy, has Dr. Millens stepped up. And so I just wanted to put that out there and tell you, I really think it's important in the arts. You know that. I'm not really going to say anything about the testing right now because I see some things out there and on the governor's desk, and so we're going to wait and see. But just like I've heard before and I've said before, I really hope we take a look at these students. I noticed that some of my students that are moving up to high school on their papers that they fill out for registration has required reading and remediated math. And I hope now that they're kind of pulling back on the testing, we might rethink some of those requirements and some of that language on those forms. And, but other than that, I just wanted to say what a great job with Dr. Millens and Dr. Santini in the arts program, and thank you so much for what you all are doing, so...
Thank you, Mrs. Margolin. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Dr. Cuckel?
None.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
I have none.
Mr. Toyber?
I have one, 4B2 on page 27.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrika?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Giavennelli?
None.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items with the exception of the pulled item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber and seconded by... Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. We have one pull to address this evening. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
Need the recommendation first, Ms. Fisher.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Atkins, please... Please read 4B2.
I recommend board approval of the appointment of Karen Watson and Matthew Fredrickson to the curriculum advisory committee through September 2018 effective May 17, 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Now, is there a motion? So moved, Mr. Toyber and a second.
Second.
Mrs. LaRiviere, and the item has been moved. Is there any discussion? Mr. Toyber.
Yeah, I will be supporting this motion, and we, both candidates here, Ms. Watson and Mr. Fredrickson, were introduced to our committee yesterday. This goes out, so I'll be supporting them, and the reasons that they, that they want to participate is, you know, they've, Mr. Fredrickson actually has children starting in the system, two coming and one currently in pre-K. And I just wanted to put a shout-out to thank all of our committee members for our boards that participate. You know, we ask a lot for our committees that represent all of the different functions that report to the boards, and I really want to thank each and every one that volunteers. And for you that don't, that don't know about our committees, you go on our website and find out, we're always looking for people that have a willingness to help us because it's a, it's a huge district and we need a lot of help. Parental input, people that have skills, you know, that, that aren't readily available, you know, in our district. And even if you don't have any skills, you just have a passion about education or kids, and you just want to give us a common sense input, that's well appreciated. So I just wanted to give that shout-out and recognize, and I think I speak for the entire board, that we really appreciate all the people that are willing to help us move our district forward.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. At this time, Dr. Atkins, would you want to introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignments who have been approved tonight in the consent agenda?
We don't have anyone in attendance today. I just want to make a couple of mentions, though. Susan Ellinger, who is going to be appointed as a coordinator, or was just appointed as coordinator, exceptional student education, relocating here from Virginia. And Frederick Ross into our procurement services, that's director of procurement services, also relocating from Tallahassee, but I am told that team is very excited about these appointments. They're going to bring a lot of knowledge to our district, so we're looking forward to getting them started.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to them. Okay, and now we'll move on to superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Atkins, please state your first recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. First recommendation, I recommend board approval of the implementation agreement with Avid Center, which includes annual site membership, training resources, curriculum, and educators professional development for 17 schools and one district director in the amount of $725,513 for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Next recommendation.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the estimated expenditure not to exceed, and I stress that, not to exceed $9,700,000 for the purchase of instructional materials, professional development, computer software, and additional material using reading categorical funds, instructional materials categorical funds, Title I funds, district general fund, and school technology refresh funds. Materials will be purchased from the Florida School Bank Depository or directly from the publisher, the producer, or authorized dealer representative. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents. This is aimed specifically at some of those curriculum recommendations I've made, so I think you're well-versed on why we're making this recommendation. What I will say is that, that not to exceed, the team has worked really, really diligently to knock this price down, and I think you'll see this tag, the actual final cost come down literally millions of dollars from where this not-to-exceed number is. So there's still negotiations, but I do want to really commend the team's effort. They, their hard work will pay dividends during this tight budget year.
Thank you very much. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrika and seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven-zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to extend the bid cafeteria, kitchen, wares, and equipment by 180 days for the period of June 3, 2017 through November 29, 2017, at an estimated expenditure of $1,200,000 with business services. Calico Industries of Florida LLC, Commercial Glass and Restaurant Supply, Inc., Johnson Lancaster and Associates, Inc., and SRA Culinary Equipment and Supply LLC pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrika, seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven-zero. Number E?
Recommend board approval to renew the bid for the purchase of fresh milk and other dairy products from Borden Dairy Company of Florida and for the first renewal period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, at an estimated expenditure of $4 million pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Patrika. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Next item?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to renew the RFP for fresh produce awarded to Oaks Farm, Inc. for the final renewal period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, at estimated amount of $3,900,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents. Again, just a reminder, this is about trying to get fresh, locally sourced produce to our students.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Item G?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the expenditure of not to exceed $6,850,000 to obtain property and casualty insurance as outlined in the board-approved brokerage contract with Risk Management Associates, Inc., DBA, Public Risk Insurance Agency for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Approval authorizes superintendent or designated to execute all, execute related documents.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion? Dr. Cuckel.
Yes, I have a question about any or all of these insurance providers. Do we combine, Dr. Atkins, our efforts with other school districts to maybe get a better rate for insurance on similar policies?
We do work with, you know, other, other agencies to try to look at those types of opportunities. For example, this one right here, we have in the past looked at consortium that's exist in, I think, the central part of the state. We found that thus far, it is to our advantage to remain independent here, and just because of the size of our district, we are a coastal district. A lot of those that are in a part of that coalition are not. Our total property values far and exceed their whole group, so, but we do continue to look at those type of things to negotiate the best deal. All insurances, we do that. Now, if you're looking at something like health insurance, yeah, that's the type of thing that's very localized. So, for example, if you go to the Tampa Bay area, as an example, your, your health insurance potentially is less, your dollar goes further because there's more competition in that area. Here, we have less competition, so our, our costs are a little bit higher, and therefore, it's not advantageous for other groups to come into that because they have to, it would be kind of a, it would not be a win for them. But we do, we do look at those things every time we go out for a bid.
When I see individual policies on something like catastrophic student accident, it seems like every district would have some need for that.
Right. We are just so large of a district that we actually, you know, we don't gain a lot of advantage, of any advantage, of getting even bigger. I mean, it, it makes common sense that that would be the case, but because the district is so large, we already receive that advantage.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, board members? Okay, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Item H?
Item H, I recommend board approval of annual expenditure of John's Eastern Company to provide claims administration services to the school district of Lee County for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and the annual service fee of $630,428.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Motion carries 7-0.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the utilization of funds not to exceed $1,750,000 from the district's healthcare fund for the purpose of funding the wellness incentive program and wellness programming for FY '18. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve, board members?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toyber.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Cuckel. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0.
The next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the bid for the re-roofing of Astero High School to Target Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc. As indicated on the attached bid tabulation, the ITB will be effective for the period of June 2017 through December 2017 at an estimated expenditure of $1,213,661.9. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrika and seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Toyber?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to renew the bid for floor covering awarded to Acousti Engineering, Inc. of Florida and Wayne Wells Floor Covering for a period of May 18, 2017 through May 17, 2018 at an estimated expenditure of $1,500,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel, seconded by Mrs. Patrika. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0.
Next recommendation...
Final recommendation.
Thank you. I recommend board approval to extend by 180 days and approve funding in the amount of $5 million for the RFP for information technology hardware, software, and equipment for vendors, Audio Visual Innovations, Inc., B&amp;H Photo, Camcore, Inc., CDW Government, LLC, Contracts Furnishing, LLC, Medor Education, E-Instruction, Lightspeed Technologies, Inc., Troxell Communications, and United Data Technologies, Inc. The resulting contract term will be June 5, 2017 through December 2, 2017. The same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board will remain in effect. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patrika, seconded by Mrs. LaRiviere. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, we'll move right along, and, Dr. Atkins, will you please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing?
Yes, I recommend board approval... I recommend board conduct a public hearing on all objections received concerning the board adopted instructional materials for 2017-2018 instructional materials plan.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval to hear objections to adopted instructional materials. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the right section of the auditorium who wishes to speak? On the left. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of May 16, 2017. Next on the agenda is board member comments. Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Thank you. Dr. Cuckel?
I don't have any.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
I just have two. One, I want to just piggyback on the comment that was made about our staff working to bring costs down even beyond what they were estimating it to be. People just need to realize how hard everyone in every department is working to do that on a very tight budget this year, and I just thank everyone for thinking outside of the box. And to piggyback on Bonnie Margolin's comments regarding Dr. Millens, I did want to share with you, Dr. Atkins, and with the board, that he said, "I just want you to know how much we new principals appreciate everything that Dr. Atkins has done for us as new principals this year." We have gotten so much support, whether it be someone in finance asking if there's anything that we need, HR, constantly hearing and getting people who are reaching out to them. He really believes that that's one of the reasons they've been so successful. So that's a shout out.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Mr. Toyber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to start by thanking Ms. Ware for, not only for coming up and commenting and giving us good news, because that's always good, you give us the good and the bad, but also for your continued effort with James Stevens. And, you know, James Stevens was... Has been a problem for a while, and when Dr. Atkins came in and the cabinet and the staff that he had, he made you a promise, and he stuck to it, and he was serious. And, you know, we are trying to do a proximity with our school choices to actually get our schools closer, you know, our... The children that live in that area closer to the schools, and one of the reasons for the delay with doing that is because all our schools weren't the same, and we had schools that needed work, and James Stevens was one of them. And so the fact that James Stevens now is a competitor and now up there with everybody else, the proximity issues that Dr. Atkins is working very hard with our school choice people to actually make that more of a possibility, so that children are in their community and with their families and closer is going to be more of a reality. So I wanted to give you that feedback and thank you for your constant effort. I also want to talk about, I was at the curriculum advisory committee, and everybody was very concerned, and so I think the public needs to know, because they hear in the news and you hear a lot of the rhetoric for a lot of the groups talking about the budget that came through and how good of a job that they did with the budget, and if... People need to know that they didn't do a good job with the budget, and our budget, our state of Florida, really let us down as far as the formulation of the budget, because what they did is not only pass a budget, but included in the budget behind closed doors a House Bill 7069, which has nothing to do with the budget, but is more about policies and procedures in education that they couldn't get passed if they were to let people that were involved in education or in the public, parents and educators and administrators, know and be able to weigh in, both to their legislators and to the governor, the impact of some of the things they're doing. You know, we've got a big push in our state legislature because a lot of them either own charter schools, or their wives run charter schools, or they founded charter schools, or they work for architectural firms that support charter schools. There's a lot of vested interest on letting charter schools be able to do a lot of things that the public schools aren't even allowed to do. When they came in 2002 with charter schools, they said, "We can do everything you can do, but cheaper." Public education said, "Okay." Well, that's not the case, because they made rules that aren't being held to the same standards as public education, whether it's their building standards or their educational standards. HB 7069 is one example that they're going to make... Have recess requirements for the public education, but it's not going to apply to the charters. They're actually going to have a Schools of Hope, where they give $140 million of taxpayer money to for-profit companies for charter schools to let them, you know, actually raise up grades, but the standards aren't the same task that we're held to with the same children in our communities. They want to put restrictions on our Title I money from the federal government and actually layer one layer more of bureaucracy on taxpayer money that actually goes to our most needed children in our communities that we feel local control should have to be... Should prevail. So all of these type of things, what made it worse was it was all done behind closed doors. It was done without any public knowledge, and it's really going to negatively impact Lee County, and it's going to negatively impact public education in general. But it also, for every taxpayer, even if you don't have a dog in the hunt for public education, the way they did it to allow them to do everything behind closed doors and not even allow any public input until it surfaces for the governor, you know, and passed it, is a process that's going to completely negate the democratic process in how we legislate up in Tallahassee. If anybody has any interest at all in saving not only public education, but the process of how we do business in the state of Florida, you need to call the governor, call your legislative delegation, and say, "They need to vote." We don't really want them to negate the entire budget and HB 7069, at least personally I don't. This isn't from the board, this is my own personal opinion, because if they pass... If they fail the budget, then it goes back in the same corrupt hands that did it the first time, and we start all over. But if they... But if the governor vetoes House Bill 7069, all the things for public education that should be legislated, argued on the floors of both the Senate and the House, were we allowed to have input on all those hearings? That process, it will stop all those bad bills in their tracks, and they have to do it the right way next year. So I just implore everybody to call the governor, to tell him to vote no, and veto HB 7069. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. Mrs. Patrika?
No comments.
Mrs. Giavennelli?
I just have a couple. It's... Graduations are coming up, so I just want to graduate... Congratulate the 2017 graduates. My daughter's one, yes. So... And I'm excited about my first graduation, so... With my daughter. So I'm excited about that, and I've got to visit a couple of schools and a few schools in Franklin Park and Buckingham, Exceptional, and Tanglewood, and Allen Park, all awesome schools. I really enjoyed it. I'm going to have lunch on Friday at school lunch, so that ought to be great. So I look forward to it.
Thank you. Jevon, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for... I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be on the student advisory committee, and it's a great way for students to have a voice, and they can tell you, like, what's happening in school. And also the opportunity for being student representative today, and I'd like to thank my parents as well, and just thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here, and we really value your service on the student advisory all this past year, and we learned a lot from you and all of the others. So thank you so much for doing that. And I also am looking forward to the 2017 graduation celebrations. I want to thank Mr. Toyber and the rest of the staff who mentioned House Bill 7069 and our budget, which is ever decreasing, leaving us with more challenges each year. But I do want to say that we have such a great story to tell. We have students like Jevon, who are doing wonderful things with the support of their teachers. And recently, I've had an opportunity not only to read at Pine Woods Elementary and visit Gulf and Challenger, but I also attended the Take Stock in Children graduation, and that was quite amazing, because students who probably would not have even graduated high school were successful and are going on to post-secondary education because they were mentored by someone from the community, and they also made a pledge to stay out of trouble, to keep their grades up, and they did that. They accomplished that, some of them all the way through middle school and high school. So I want to congratulate them for making a promise to themselves and keeping it. And as we... As I visited the teacher recruitment fair, I saw a lot of potential in bright new young faces who are interested in coming in and starting to make differences in the lives of children every day. I attended the Excellence...
Tell them what the foundation gives those kids for doing that, for Takes Action.
Okay, I should tell them that, shouldn't they? They get a full ride to a local state university or college, and that's huge, because... And many of them are the first high school graduates in their family and will be the first ones attending college. So we are really grateful to the foundation for sponsoring that program and for helping us to manage all of the work that goes with it. I also attended the Learning for Life recognition, the Excellence in Education, and the Law Week lunch, all of which honored some of our teachers for the work that they do every day. And as we face more budget constraints and have to continue to do more with less, I want to thank our talented staff for their dedication and all that they do to continue to show that it really does take a village to raise a child. And I think that's all I have this evening. Mr. Martin?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
Just one quick thing. We... Our staff just recently surprised me with this. We were awarded... School district of Lee County has been recognized as a Florida healthy school district at the gold level for the period of 2017 through April 2019. That's based on a district assessment that we did. We rated out in health services at 98 percent, where we remove health-related barriers to attendance, performance, and academic success. Healthy school environment, 98 percent. Healthy school environment reflects the physical plant, as well as the social climate of the district, including safety, personal interaction, violence prevention, employee wellness at 100 percent, and family and community involvement at 100 percent. So that was nice. It came from the Coordinated School Health Partnership, which is a healthy action for health... Florida Action for Healthy Kids, Florida Association of District School Superintendents, and the Florida Healthy Kids Corporation. So just wanted to...
That's wonderful.
Put that out there.
Thank you for that. On Tuesday, June 6, there will be a school board briefing meeting at 2:00 p.m., as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business, come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel, seconded by Mr. Toyber. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.